Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the August 11th Board of Selectmen meeting, again, both virtual and in person, and we're a jam-packed standing-room-only crowd here today. As always, we will stand up and salute the flag with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 28, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of July 28, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Fred, all those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. And finally, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 2, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll get right to the first selectmen's updates. We started the St. Rocks Feast last night. Four nights, it goes, runs through Saturday. We end off, if you're not doing anything, on Sunday, we have a mass at St. Rocks at 9:00, and then we do a procession through the streets of Chickahominy, and they bring the statue around, and people pin dollar bills on it. It used to be a couple miles long, I don't know if it will be a couple miles this year, but you get your steps in, and it's always a, to me, it's the best feast in Fairfield County. To remind people, two years ago, it was the only one in the state of Connecticut. They did an abbreviated one, it was really condensed and safe, they took all the protocols. So, St. Rocks is always ahead of the curve, so if you get a chance, stop by and have some pizza freaks. And I got a great text this morning from Brian Natali from Cos Cob. I remember, I don't know if you remember, I mentioned that we threw out the first pitch a few weeks ago in Banksville for the Cal Ripken team that was going to the World Series in Branson, Missouri, and Brian told me this morning, they're playing Raleigh, North Carolina tonight in the semifinals. It's probably the farthest-a-Grenwich team has gone in a long, long time, so we will be tweeting out good luck to them later on, and maybe posting a little update tomorrow in the weekly e-blast, but they're actually, you could watch it online, too, apparently, so I'll try maybe to get that link out to everybody. So, good luck to Greenwich. Next, the, oh, we're getting some, lots of people calling again about the panhandling issue, and as you probably know, that everybody has a right to be out and about, and that's not illegal. However, there are some instances where the town can restrict it, and we are looking at that now. We are also having the GPD go down there and making sure that they're not on the roads and putting themselves in danger and everybody else in danger. We may be posting a sign up there about any help that they may be able to get in other places. We've sent, Human Services Department's been great to go out there and offer their help. Sometimes they don't want to take it, and that's why we may have to restrict it a little bit more, because when they go close to the roadways, it becomes a little bit of a hazard. So, we'll continue, we're getting some emails on that, so just know that the town is on top of it, and again, thanks to Human Services for always being there and reaching out and trying to offer help wherever and whatever they can. Army Corps of Engineers update, we had a Zoom with them two days ago, and as you know, they are going to be, the $35 million federal project will be expanding the two bridges on the Post Road. That will help a lot with the flooding. Our concern then, and still is, that there's some other choke points on the Byram River, and when I kayaked it a few weeks ago, you could see where it's getting really, really low, and there's some debris in the river, and there's some really narrow passage points. So, they inform me that to go back now would basically risk the whole $35 million, because it was approved by Congress just for this part. We could actually ask them to adjust the work on the bridge part of it, but we can't go downstream. And one of the lawyers said, well, the town can handle, you know, do stuff what they want downstream, and I politely reminded her that we don't have sole jurisdiction there. It's Army Corps, there's deep from state of Connecticut, there's New York State, there's Westchester County. So, I asked Pat Sesto, our Environmental Affairs Director, if we can do a meeting in early September, and I reached out to the Pembroke-Glenville Association, and they're very interested in doing it, to find out what we can do on our end that doesn't require permits, like cleaning up the river, maybe the private land, having the private landowners maybe clean up a little bit on their sides, each side of the river. So, whatever, and whatever, whenever we can do that without permits, we'll make sure everybody's informed of that. So, I'll do, we'll do another big meeting, either at the Glenville School or at the Western Greenwich Civic Center. So, stay tuned for that. Tomorrow, 12:00, we're going to be saying goodbye to the Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. As Ken mentioned before, I'm going to take a sledgehammer and get a good whack at it. It's a good old building, and we're going to miss it, but we're also looking forward to groundbreaking in a few months of the new co-in Eastern Greenwich Civic Center. So, lots of memories there for a lot of us, but the building is falling apart, and it's not really, you know, it's not, I'm not confident in saying it's a safe building in the next few years, so we're going to get a new state-of-the-art building, and it's a big public-private partnership. So, more to come on that, but that'll be 12:00 tomorrow, and yes, Ken, I may wear the orange and blue for about 30 seconds.
First place.
They are in first place. So, and Erica Crist is having a opening ribbon cutting on 5:30, at 5:30 on August 23rd. FMR Wellness Foundation, we'll get more information out on that. Did a ribbon cutting the other day for Wildacre Rotisserie in Cos Cob. It's getting great reviews, so if you're, if you like chicken and you're in Cos Cob, stop down there. It's the old Starbucks. And, let me, two other things. I wanted to just remind people who speak to sign up on the sheet, and you have a three-minute limit to speak. And also, I want to thank everybody, because I think that's going to be the main issue today, we don't have a long meeting, is the climate resolution, and we heard from people on both sides, and people were telling people to email us on both sides, and so we're, I just want people to know that every single one of them was heard. I think we incorporated everybody's concerns into it. There are some that are going to want the full thing from the original one, that's not going to happen, and there's some that don't want us to take any action, and that's not going to happen, so that's government. It's, you know, you don't, it's, everything is a compromise, but we think this is actually a good blueprint for the town, and we took great pains for those who were saying, you know, don't put the town in a position where you're going to mandate something, and as somebody who never likes to overpromise and under-deliver, we changed some words around to, you know, have, to may, just so we're making sure that we're not putting the town in that position where we may, you know, regret saying that because we couldn't do it, or put us in a position where we have to do something that the town may not want to, or they may not be able to do it at some point. But I think this is a good blueprint, it's a good, it's a good compromise, and again, people on both sides of this issue had a say in this, and actually, we incorporated a lot into it, and so that's probably my legislative experience and background, that, you know, 50%, something's better than 100% of nothing, but I think this is better than that. I think this shows that the town takes the environment very, very seriously, that we can lead, but we could do so responsibly and make it local, like, and I want to, again, salute the students for basically scrapping what they gave us, right, and made it, and they heard that we wanted it more local in nature, and you heard some of our concerns about, you know, what we may or may not be able to do, and you really, I think, set an example of this, and, you know, I think you're off to a good start if you want a legislative career at some point, so. But again, I want to thank everybody who weighed in on this. Again, we're, we're not, Greenwich, we're not afraid to lead, but we also want to do so responsibly, so. And also, one last word on it, I'm, you know, we're all about transparency, so I am definitely open to having other, you know, boards and commissions look at this, too, after that. I think that's only a good thing, they may see something we don't see, they may make it even better. But I know Lauren had a comment she wanted to add to that, too, when she does her updates. So, again, thank you, everybody, for weighing in, and I think it was, it was a good, it's a good product, and, you know, it's, I think it was a great experience for everybody, so thank you. Lauren?
Sure, thanks, Fred, sorry. Good morning, everyone, and I came back from a brief vacation last week, so I want to acknowledge all the emails that we received on actually all the topics that are on our agenda today, between the resolution, the opting out of the state items for accessory dwellings, and then even some feedback still on what's happening at the Brookside Construction and closures. So, I think what I could do at each, you know, one of those is, you know, talk about what my thoughts are, you know, when we get to those agenda items. So, just to tell you a little bit about what I have been working on, I'm the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Central Middle School Building Committee, and last night, we toured Greenwich Country Day School, a group of us, small group of us, just to look and understand some of the efficiencies that they were able to achieve as they constructed and renovated some buildings on their properties, so that was valuable. Still looking for, I made a plug a couple of weeks ago, that looking for some people to join the Friends of the Senior Center, so thanks to the press who helped get that word out. And then we have Free Music Friday again tomorrow. Next Friday, it's going to be an evening event, so hopefully, folks that aren't necessarily able to participate during the day, and certainly, it's been so hot during the day, can attend at night, and we're starting to think about what we might do in the late fall, early winter, bringing some music, free music to the avenue at that timeframe as well. The other thing that we've been talking about is feedback that people are giving us on the Jersey barriers that are protecting the restaurant nodes, what we can do to visually improve that. Some of the restaurant owners have already done their own improvements to make it look better, whether that's plantings or, you know, just some decorations, but what could we do as a town that sort of unifies the way that we approach the barriers? So, going to think about getting some feedback from ARC, which is our Architectural Review Commission, which is a, I'm trying to think of the right word, they help guide the Planning and Zoning Commission, so to see what we can do that's, you know, appropriate for Greenwich and make that available to the restaurant owners, the same way we make the Jersey barriers available. And that's my update.
Thanks, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, Fred and Lauren. So, so much for the lazy days of summer. The boards and committees and commissions that I serve have been incredibly productive, and even as I hold on to the last few weeks of summer, I am looking forward to everyone's return after Labor Day, when I think the fruits of this work will be very apparent. And in case you missed it, yesterday's retired Men's Association Speaker, no worries, Nelson Tebby, a Greenwich High School alum and Cornell Law School professor, am I allowed to say "go Big Red" twice, spoke about originalism in constitutional interpretation. It was a very interesting and timely topic. The video from his talk will be posted on the RMA website, greenichrama.org. And I saw that the Brant Foundation is having an open house on Saturday from noon to 3:00, that it's free to the public, that is on North Street, and if anyone is interested, this summer's a great time to be showing our support for our local arts organizations. I have a lot to say about the climate resolution, but I'll wait until we open that agenda, but I just, I want some clarification, though. Fred, when you say that other commissions and boards can weigh in, what we vote on today will be the final resolution coming from us, right?
I don't know. I mean, I've never, we've never done that before, and I don't know if, I'm going to, something like, I'm sorry, I'm surprised with that. We historically, you know, pass things on to the RTM after it comes out of our board. This is, we took great pains to make sure that this is not binding the town to anything, but it just gives a blueprint of what we could do in the future. If some, if the, I know, I think the students went to planning and zoning, would the RTM be, if they wanted to take it up, what's your thoughts on that? Because that came up this morning, and I'm okay with having everybody look at it, as well as planning and zoning again.
Yes, good morning. The RTM would take it up if it were ordinance, and this is not an ordinance.
Right.
However, that's not to preclude the committees on the RTM from expressing an interest and reviewing it, but in terms of a formal action by the RTM, since it doesn't appear to me to be an ordinance that's being proposed, there's no requirement that they take it up.
Sure, yeah, thank you, because they can weigh in on it, so that's, yeah, and I think that's a pro, because people, I think some people had the wrong impression about this. I'm seeing some emails this morning that are referring to the first draft of this, of the original resolution, so, you know, it's, sometimes you have to, you know, that's, you're talking about things that happened in the first inning, and you're in the top of the ninth, so I'm okay with anybody else looking at it, but certainly getting, I'm willing to vote today on, given the approval of what we edited to, to, I think, suit the town and show that the town actually takes it seriously, and will continue to do a lot of the things that we're doing, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, any other, is it, okay, all right. So, the first item on all business is still ongoing. I know Jim Michael was away for a couple of weeks, so that may have halted a little bit of the Perna Lane parking issue, so hopefully, we'll get that resolved, hopefully, in the coming weeks, so that's put off. And going to item two is the request for the declaration of a climate change emergency, although the word "emergency," I think, has been struck from this, so I think it's
Resolution.
It's a resolution, yeah, it's a, I don't want people to start thinking again that, before the emails start coming in. All right, so this is the third read, and we've given you our word that we would vote, and we take that seriously when we give our word for something, but I'll let, Lauren, you have the, we went over all of this the last few weeks, and everybody doesn't get everything that they want in this thing, and that's democracy, as I always tell people, you know, when you sit down to watch TV with your family at night, you don't get to watch everything that you want. And again, coming from the legislature, I never saw one piece of legislation in 11 years that was exactly as was, you know, put into the system. Sometimes it's completely different, but I think we kept the spirit of what you're trying to do here, but we did make it, through your leadership, much more local and much more doable, and with great respect to the town, and making sure that the town was not put in a bad position, and, as I said, overpromising and underdelivering something, so no one wants to be, have their name attached to anything like that, so. And as I said, I reached out and did some homework, too, and found out in some cases, it wasn't doable, like with fleet, the fleet department said it wasn't doable just yet to do all the trucks with electric vehicles just yet, because of, they need those trucks during storms, and, you know, if you have a 24-hour weather event, it's tough to pull trucks off the road for an hour at this point, but I think it ties, as the, and Jay Damasek, who is our director there, said, as time goes on, we will see that technology, but for now, we are putting in some money for fleet, for vehicles, cars, which is a little different, so we'll, you know, whatever the BET allows us to do, they gave us one last year, we'll put in for maybe two more this year, we'll see, and see what they give us, and we'll certainly advocate for us, but we don't want to, I was going to say, you know, let's, how about doing 35% of our whole fleet by the year 2028? That's why I called Jay Damasek, because if I said that, I would have overpromised and put us in a position where it was impossible. So, that's why, you know, we did, we took, you know, this took so long, is because it just, what starts out as innocent and very positive sometimes may have unintended consequences, so we had to look at everything, so. But I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
So, everyone's aware, we had a public meeting where the three of us were able to discuss, you know, the whereas clauses and the resolve clauses, and created this version that's in front of us. I think there was one typographical thing that we wanted to change in the second resolved clause after priorities and policies, I think there was an extra "and," so we wanted to delete that. And, you know, Fred, along with your statement of overpromising and underdelivering, we did not talk about this, so everyone knows in public, we didn't spend as much time on the operational clauses as we did on the whereas clauses, we ran out of time. So, in item number three, after the plan, instead of that shall, I'd like to propose that we amend it to may, because I'm not sure we can plan and flesh out plans for all the items listed in, you know, what essentially could be, you know, 15 months. Not to say that they wouldn't be, but to say that they will be, I think that just commits us to something that, you know, may not happen, so I'd like to change that to may. And I thought about the folks that need to weigh in on this. I know that it doesn't have to go to the RTM, but I would not prevent the RTM from having a point of view. I mention that because when I was running in 2019, my opponent and I were given a question during a debate, does the Board of Selectmen, shouldn't they just be the only ones that appoint people to boards, commissions, and committees? Why should it go to the RTM? And I think that the way I answered the question is, we don't know everything, we don't have every piece of information, so to me, it's always healthy and helpful to get more points of view. My opponent said no, he thought that the three-member board should have, you know, that right, and it doesn't need to go to the RTM. I realize this isn't an ordinance, but I'm not opposed to, you know, people expressing a point of view and, you know, getting this honed over time, just like our commitment on the POCD, that we would look at it every two years. So, I don't want to box us into something that doesn't adapt. So, I make a motion that we change item two to remove the second "and," and item three to change "shall" to "may."
Wait, is there, well, I'll second it, and then a discussion?
Yeah, so I'm very, yes, on the second resolve clause, absolutely, take off the "and," it's on the second line, so that it reads, "The town of Greenwich will continue to prioritize, considering other town priorities and policies, comma, ways to advance." So, good with that. I'm not as good with taking out "shall" and saying "may," because I do, it just reads differently. I mean, can we just take out "shall" or "may" and just say, "By December 2023, including Would that work?
I think, you know, I think "may" doesn't commit us to, again, put us in a position where it may not happen, but shows that we want to go in that direction, so I'm okay with it being "may," but certainly, I respect your point of view and
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not okay with it, yeah, I'm not okay with it being "may."
So, okay, so, all those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, no. Well, I am a
For the second part.
Right, for the second part. Do you take out "and," right?
So, do we have to separate that? Because Janet's okay with the first?
Parody.
Well, I think, as long as it's been recorded.
But I think to Janet's point, I think it would be more equitable to do this two-step motion than one for each.
Okay.
Okay, then I amend my amended, I amend my amendment. So, Lauren Raven, I motion that we, in the second resolved clause, remove the "and" from the second sentence, so it reads, "Priorities and policies, comma, ways." Yes.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you.
Next motion, Lauren Raven, I motion that in clause three, again, for purposes, just making sure we can get it all done, not that anything needs to be excluded, but to make sure that we're not overpromising and underdelivering, that after December 2023 statement, that "shall" just say that "may" include. And if everything gets in there, beautiful, but if it doesn't, we're not, we're not saying that it will.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, no.
Okay, thank you. And was there another?
So, now, do we, Barbara, if you could help us out, so now, the motion is to approve the resolution as amended. So, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the climate change resolution as amended.
I will
Go ahead.
I'll second that. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. And we'll certainly, during the comment section, if anybody wants to ask a question, what we took out and what we condensed and changed, you know, we have that here, too, so.
Can I take this opportunity to congratulate our students?
Sure.
Absolutely.
So, really, yes. Round of applause. Really, 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 really well done. You have modeled what, you know, a very productive and constructive grassroots effort can do. Like Fred, you know, in looking at this, I was thinking about the recent Schumer Mansion compromise on the federal climate change bill, and I would say the same, that it might not be everything that a climate activist would want, but it is still a really, really good outcome for our environment. I was also just, I'll look at my notes, reflecting on, in Connecticut, in the most recent legislative session at Hartford, the Climate Change Mitigation Act was passed, and, which says that by 2040, which is 18 years from now, Connecticut must supply all its electricity from non-carbon sources, and it just struck me that 2040 is 18 years from now, that means that tomorrow's future leaders are newborns today, and I hope we don't disappoint them. So, again, thank you for your leadership.
Yeah, thank you, and again, I'll echo that. You were, very rarely do I see anybody, whether it's adults or students, come and ask to talk to people who don't, who have a different opinion, and I know you reached out to some people who didn't, who were, had concerns, and that's really what it is, is talking to each other. You go through life, you never get, every bill I ever put in in Hartford that passed, and I was fortunate to get a lot of things passed up there, it never, it never passed the way I put it in, but it's, you know, people on both sides of the aisle weigh in, and you, you come, you usually come to a better, a better product, unless it's something that's very controversial and it's just, you know, jammed down everybody's throats, and that didn't happen here, obviously, so. And there were, and again, there was people from, what I liked was, there were Democrats, Republicans, unaffiliated people, and people who aren't political, people who had great concerns about it, people who thought it wasn't strong enough, and they left a little disappointed, but, you know, at the end of the day, most of the people contributed to this, that, you know, in some way or another, the emails made us look at everything, and certainly, give it another hard look, and that's always, at the end of the day, that's always what you want. No one has a monopoly on good ideas, and certainly, you exhibited, I think, great leadership in doing this, and sometimes, when the adults weren't, you know, heated over it, you kept your cool, and that's pretty amazing, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the third and second penultimate The third and second penultimate, penultimate item is a request for endorsement of proposed municipal opt-out for the minimum parking and accessory department, apartment provisions. And we had this two weeks ago, and I was ready to vote on it then. I think our, my colleagues were too, but they wanted to have a second read, which is what we normally do. So we have, I have not heard anything to disabuse me of my position and change my mind in the last two weeks. So I am good to go with it.
I just wanted to thank, yes, thank you for the second read. I, I have, I was approached by, by a number of residents. And so, you know, feedback is always welcome, and I thank them for that. Like Fred, I have not heard anything that would change my support for the opt-out. I do want to, I do want to note though, that, that the opt-out is really consistent with our thoughtfully crafted P O C D. And in fact, I think it better promotes diversity and supports our vulnerable populations. But I did want to just reflect the feedback, some of the feedback that I heard, that one demographic might have been overlooked, and that is our young graduates, who might find it hard to find or afford entry-level housing in Greenwich. And now, if they meet income limits, they could qualify for low-income ADUs. If that's not the case, we might consider lowering the age-defining seniors to 55, because I think that means more by right could build ADUs to service-
Easy, easy.
Well, I'm going to say that, my last sentence here is, I do not consider 55 senior. But I just, I just-
Not that I'm anywhere close to that, I'm just saying. I was asking for friends.
Oh, I'm far away from it.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, yeah, you know, these are things you could always continue to look at. Housing is really expensive around here. And I know a lot of people who, you know, are teachers and firemen and policemen. After a couple of years, they're not eligible for these, for these types of dwellings and units. And at some point, they get married and they, they want some space for their family, so they, they go where it's a little cheaper. And that's been the trend for the last 25 years or so, where people are just going up the line a little bit more. But we'd love to keep them here. Growing up here, I remember all the cops and firemen lived in town. And that was before the real estate took off. So it's hard with the, the free market, but that's, you know, it's something you have to deal with. But we're certainly, it is consistent with us, so thank you for pointing that out. So.
Just a couple of things. I just want to comment on the, the police and fire, maybe more so police and teachers. Some of the feedback that I got, why they don't want to live in town is because they work in town and they're too exposed. We live in a day and age, you know, where people know where people live, social media. You know, you could Google anybody's house and you could see exactly, you know, what's going on. So yeah, realize there's cost to it, but sometimes it's not a cost decision. So just want to, you know, talk about that narrative. And I agree with Janet. Some of the feedback that we did get was from, you know, our younger residents who maybe just graduated college, starting off their new job, don't want to necessarily live, you know, in the same, under the same roof as their parents, have a little bit of independence. So, you know, something to think about. And I think the narrative that we want local control is why I'm in favor of opting out of the provisions in the act. It just maintains our narrative that we would rather have local control. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the request to endorse the proposed municipal opt-out for minimum parking and accessory apartment provisions in the Connecticut Public Act 2029, 2129.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes. And I just, I just want to take this opportunity. It makes me sad that our, that our fire and police and teachers feel exposed. So I just want to give them a shout out, since this, this is a good opportunity as any.
Yeah, thank you. They're, they're terrific, and we would love, you know, to return to the old days. But the, the prices are so, you know, it's hard to control that. And what I found a lot, is a lot of them, they end up adopting, adapting well to their, their new towns. And it's not really, new town, no pun intended, but that's one of the towns that they're, they've been going to. But they're, it's not that far of a, of a hike for them. So a lot of them have been doing it now for decades. But yeah, anything we can do that fits within the guidelines, certainly, we'll, we'll certainly try our best. And last on the agenda is extension of the road closure of Brookside Drive, originally approved on May 26th of 2022. And I think we have a representative from A.J. Penna. Oh, okay. I want to thank Katie. Katie, did you want to join in, say anything on that? I'm sorry.
Just thank you very much for your endorsement, and we'll be at the RTM in, in September. So thank you very much.
Yeah, well, thank you for, for presenting it and for being patient.
Good morning, Director Camillo and Board. How's everyone doing?
Good morning, Dana.
So they, we were requesting an additional extension on the Brookside closure for our water main extension for the Aquarion Water Company. We're asking an additional 60 calendar days to complete the water main extension portion of the project, which roughly will land us in mid-October. We've been, we've been seeing unfavorable digging conditions, a lot of granite, a lot of hard rock, and a lot of utilities that are actually in the way of where we're putting the new water main. So it's slowed production down quite a bit. We've reached roughly 40% of the project and now have passed over US 1 and have gone on to the south side to heading towards Field Point. The reason for this extension, we had, due to the rock, and we had a slightly star. And we feel as if we can keep the road closed, it would be less intrusive today and surrounding schools and fire department and, and police.
Thank you, Dana. Have the neighbors been contacted for this latest request?
I believe Aquarion has submitted the notification for the, the updates, the updated notification to all the residents.
Well, I don't believe it's sent to them. Yeah, we, we, it's prepared to be sent out. We don't know, we, we, I don't, I, it's John, it's A.J. Penna.
Hey, Sean.
I, I believe that they prepared a notice to go back out. I don't believe it was, it was administered as yet because we didn't, we don't have, we didn't have approval to do so. So I think it was basically pending the, the outcome of this meeting, and then the notifications would go out. But a letter has been submitted, you know, and it's been prepared and ready to be released. And I believe the original notification was actually for 90 days anyway. I think we requested 60, we've been on the ambitious side. But the original notification was for 90 days. But there is a letter that's been prepared by Aquarion that is, I think it was also submitted, prepared to be released based in, based on the decision of the, today.
Okay, thank you. I, I know the work has to be done, certainly, and I'm okay with that. But I just want to see if my colleagues have any comments before.
So some of the feedback that I got or received is that it gets backed up sometimes during the, the peak hours, especially coming from Arch Street up Sound View onto Field Point. So I don't know if it's feasible to maybe just get some extra help directing traffic because people aren't sure, because that's a tricky intersection. If you're coming up from Field Point, you have a stop sign, and people are going through the stop sign and not letting the people coming up from Sound View that make the right onto Field Point. So it's getting a little, a little dicey out there.
We could certainly add another uniformed police director, if that would help alleviate it.
I think so, thank you.
I have nothing to add. I would, I would say the same thing that Lauren just said.
Me too. So thank you. Yeah, that would, that would be very helpful. But thank you. So, I mean, this has to be done. So I mean, I'm, I'm okay with granting the approval.
Alrighty. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the extension of the road closure of Brookside Drive that we originally approved on May 26th. And I believe the extension is just another 60 days. I second that. Sorry.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your, your time today and your working to get that done.
We will work to get it done as quickly as possible. And we just wanted to thank you and sincerely the town of Greenwich, who they've, they've been fantastic to work with and really helping us move the project forward. So just to thank everyone from, you know, DPW, the Hyatt Department, and New York City, and Fred. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. It's been more than accommodating.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Have a good day.
You're safe here.
Thank you. So there is no new business, and we're going to go to the public comments now. And I want to thank everybody real quickly who sent in emails. We get so many, it's hard to respond to every one of them. But know that they, they were read and, and the thoughts were incorporated as best we could. So thank you. So first up is Myra, who has been a mentor to the students.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. I, I just think it's important to note that Greenwich has done some things to address climate change. The 2019 P O C D directly puts a, an emphasis on preparing for the challenges of climate change and needing to support town departments in their efforts. Recently, the town hired consultants to evaluate the town's public properties and infrastructure vulnerability from coastal flooding and sea level rise scenarios. It has mapped coastal flood zones. DPW elevated three pump stations that are within flood zones to reduce damage during flooding events. DPW requires low-impact development approaches. It is beginning, and we are beginning to talk about energy efficiencies in our, in our buildings. And in concert with the town's Sustainability Committee, nonprofits and volunteers, the town is addressing food security, waste reduction, habitat restoration, conservation of resources and all manner of environmental pollutant reduction. The town has passed a pollinator pathway resolution. Greenwich Tree Conservancy and Parks and Rec have planted over 500 trees within the past year. Parks and Rec and environmental groups planted native wetland buffers along coastal areas to bolster shoreline stabilization. Planning and zoning is developing new landscaping regulations that address heat island mitigation, carbon sequestration, and generally prioritizing the right kind of plant species that should be planted in specific settings. And the Greenwich Land Trust and Conservation Committed, Commission have added 80 acres of open space to Greenwich. Lastly, Greenwich Greenscape Committee and the Tree Conservancy are awaiting state DOT approval to plant 500 trees along the post road. I may have missed some things. I apologize if I did. But the point is that the town is doing a lot. And think of what the town can do with a coordinated approach and a fleshed-out plan that is directed to mitigating climate change, forestalling its worst effects and adapting to those outcomes that are unavoidable at this late date. Greenwich can do all of this and step out as a leader in the state and of the region in saving lives, habitat and property values, and giving people hope that we can get on the other side of this crisis without bringing down our economy, our commons or our democracy in the process. We have learned also from a recent meeting with D. Commissioner Dykes that there is a lot of federal and state money available to support these actions. I commend the students, in particular Isabel Harper, for persisting in this effort to bring urgency to our focus on this issue and for the light she has shone through our democratic process. Sorry, I went a little over.
Thank you very much. Thank you for pointing out a lot of the things. And I think we're actually going to do a little more than 500 trees on the post road. And I, and I, and thank you for, again, I should have mentioned the, the severe flooding that we've been having. And I firmly believe that these storms are becoming more and more frequent. So that's another reason why to get, get out ahead of it. So I appreciate your, your pointing that out and taking the time to focus on this. Oh, I'm sorry. Isabel.
Hi, I'm Isabel Harper. And I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in this process, especially the students who worked with me who can't, who couldn't be here today, but they're, they're here in spirit. And also Nicole for coming. And yeah, all the students and all of the mentors and everybody that was involved in this process. And I'm going to keep this short, but I think that the product that we finished with was actually much stronger than the one that we originally had. And I really thank everybody who collaborated and was involved in the process. And I think that this is going to be a really, really good thing for the town. And it's going to build upon all the things that Myra just mentioned, that the town has been doing to help the environment and to help the people, because the environment and the people are interconnected. So, so yeah, I thank everybody. And I thank all the people who were involved and couldn't be here today. And yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for your, your great leadership. And your, and your colleagues who couldn't be here today. So certainly a big shout out to them. And next up is Nicole.
Hi, I'm Nicole Freitas. I'm super grateful that the Board of Selectmen voted yes on the resolution today. I think it's super important because my generation, obviously, is expected to experience extreme weather events due to the anthropogenic climate change. And we will be disproportionately affected by the gradual warming and due to that increased concentration of methane and greenhouse gas emissions. And I'm really grateful as a young student and a resident and an admirer of nature for you guys voting yes on the resolution and supporting climate action. I am, throughout this lengthy process, our town's youth have bent themselves backwards to compromise on the resolution that our leaders can agree on. And I do believe in having agreed upon consensus to allow things to move forward. And it's important to be realistic about goals and be specific about those intentions. But I do wish that the resolution could have included state goals to supply 100% of its electricity from zero-carbon resources by 2040. I think that bill's intent was to recommend towns to recognize the urgency in transitioning to climate or clean energy. And its inclusion would have increased sustainable action in Greenwich. I hope that although this goal is no longer included in the resolution, that the Climate Resiliency Plan that's in the resolution will catalyze that action. And yeah, I'm really grateful. And I urge you guys to continue supporting climate action because of course, the future of Greenwich is in your hands. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Nicole. Appreciate your, your words and, and efforts here. And yeah, just a final word on it. I think words are great because they, sometimes they'll, they'll lead you in the way you need to go. But at the end of the day, the one thing that matters is action. And I think that, as you mentioned, we've been doing a lot of this stuff already and still a lot more work to do. And as, as you mentioned, it doesn't mean that you have to undo the economy or wreck the economy. I mean, they're not mutually exclusive. And I think there's some really good examples of places like Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, which 40 years ago was really polluted. And today, it's one of the, you know, shining cities in, in North America. And so it can be done. And it starts with little small steps, but it's okay to, to- And so it can be done, and it starts with little small steps, but it's okay to shoot up here. You always want to shoot. I keep always, I say this quote all the time, and I never get sick, tired of saying it, but the great Vince Lombardi, the coach of the Green Bay Packers, said, "You always shoot for perfection. You're never going to attain it, but along the way, you may catch excellence." And so what you did was, I think, you, to Nicole's point, yeah, you, you want to shoot for that, that's the goal. But in a democracy, right, you have people like worried about, oh, what are you getting us, putting us in, you know, set up to fail, or are you mandating something, we may not be able to? And so they, they have a voice, too. So we, you know, we wanted to get it done and accommodate and listen without really derailing the intent of what, of what you put forward. So, but we certainly hear you on that. So thank you.
And I'll just add on, words, actions, but really outcomes. So what we need is outcome, not, not just, you know, action for the sake of action. And when we eventually get the K P I's from the P O C D in front of my colleagues, you know, that's what we're intending to do, is what are those outcomes that are, you know, going to lead us to all the things in the P O C D that support climate resiliency?
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for all your, your hard work here. Seeing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, we have appointments and nominations.
We do. That's why, that's why I have these.
All right, there, there's several. We've been really super busy over the past six weeks or so. So I have several. I don't know if, if I should read them all individually or go down. Okay, thank you, Barbara. So the first one, Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Robert Greeley to the Board of Ethics in position R3 for a term expiration date of June 30th, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Second, or next one, Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve Stephanie Johnson to the Board of Ethics as a returning member R4 for a term expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Phyllis, Fifi Sheridan, to the Historic District Commission as a returning member with a turn, position R4, with a term expiration of October 31st, 2027.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint Irene Dietrich to the Housing Authority as a new member with a term expiration of July 31st, 2027.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Erica Clark to the Board of Human Services as a new member R1 for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Ted Walworth to the Inland, Wetlands, and Water Courses Agency as a new alternate member A2 for a term expiring October 31st, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Michael Bocino to the Board of Parks and Rec as a returning member R6 for a term expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Nancy Chapin as a returning member of the Board of Parks and Recreation, position R4, for a term expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Vivian Wu as a new member of the Board of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation, position R9, for a term expiration of 6/30/2023.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Ken Roigazinski as a returning member to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, position R1, for a term expiration October 31st, 2026.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Arnold Wells as returning member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, position A3, for a term expiration of October 31st, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Mary Barnes Jenkins as a new member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, alternate position A1, for a term expiring October 31st, 2023.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
And last but not least, I motion, Lauren Raven, that we nominate Nick MacRae as a returning member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, position R2, for a term expiration of October 31st, 2025.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Thank you. And thank you for all the hard work, Lauren, on that. You're the quarterback when it comes to these, these interviews and nominations, so thank you. It's a lot of work. Seeing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Thanks, everybody, for attending. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Ken. Thanks, Samina.